Brief query. All right?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Niranjan, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Hi, sir.
Good, good. So I just repeat again, the query was, which is the most sought after skill needed today to learn, to land a good, high-paying job in computer science domain? That was the query. And I used a brand-new AI research engine, which sits on top of all AI tools and utilizes these resources available on the internet to get the output for us. And this AI tool was developed by Parag Agarwal. And here, this is the executive summary, I'll briefly go through it. So it, you can, you can go through it. Important point is, barrier of this AI jobs, generative AI jobs, only 2.5% of job postings are for entry level, indicating that employers expect candidates to be already possess a strong foundation in some software engineering and data science. So after that, we go down, down, down. Not much, you have already seen all this, I suppose. So there are the various resources. This is what it says, skills. Cybersecurity trend durability is very high. It's not likely to be automated, recession is very less. And it's more stable and high-paying. Gen AI, high growth, and the automation risk is moderate. Recession resilience is moderate. Then there are the DevOps, Kubernetes, high and so on. So these are the key takeaways. Cybersecurity emerges as the most resilient, long-term skill. Gen AI, ML with highest growth carries a moderate risk. Cloud computing and DevOps are foundational and highly resilient. All right? So now we will go down further, further, further. Skill bundles, employers reward. New grad bundle, for a new graduate, Python, Git, DSA, analytical thinking and communication. We can forget about the senior. And here is the various salaries. Okay? And these are the various rooms. You can go down further. These are the salaries that AI ML engineers can expect to get. And these are the certi-, this is important, certifications that CSE engineer needs to take. Please review this carefully. Cloud, three to four months. Cloud with Azure. That was AWS. Three months. Google Professional Machine Learning Engineer. Unfortunately, this is a paid course. This is not free. Some of these courses are paid, you will have to figure out what is the equivalent free course or a low-priced course from Udemy etc. Now comes a 90-day action plan. Now here I will have to hand over to Niranjan because one by one, I don't know these terms. My problem is that I'm not a CSE engineer. So somebody who can now take over, one by one, action one, action two, action three of month, month one. Each student will have to contribute. All right? So now, Niranjan, here you go. Switch on your mic.
Sir, like, do I need to tell about what, what we have to do in the month one? I'd, that flow I had to explain?
Go ahead.
Am I, am I audible, sir?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so today we have here to talk about Gen AI and finding our future jobs and as sir already said, there are lot of jobs that are coming in that domain. So, so sir has planned for us 90 days' plan, which we have to plan and we have to apply the plan and work on that so that we will be ready for future jobs. So nowadays, we may learn software development and some data science or data analytics in our normal terms. But when we go to software field, the trending things like Gen AI and AI tools are very much asked as of my experience. So it is very necessary for us to learn these things. So month one means there will be four months, four weeks in a month. So here it is mentioning, we have to learn Python refreshment. Most of the classes present on YouTube are free for learning Python.
Yeah, hello?
Most of these classes are free. Sorry, sir, there was a disturbance. Okay, most of the Python classes are free and learn this Pandas and NumPy. Usually you don't get in a single course of all these things. You need to search for separate videos and learn. And recently I took a course from, done by Kodwic Harry, where all these concepts of data sense are covered. And next, they are suggesting to learn AWS and U and fundamental certification. And it is free also, AWS is providing free certification. But we can do that basic certification, the only thing is we need to have debit card in order to login to that and do the course of this AWS. So if we complete basic certification, then we can move to AWS Cloud Practitioner. This is a paid one, but it adds very high value to our resume. Especially if you want to go in the cloud domain, I think this is the best certificate that we can do. And next action is to enroll in high-quality generative AI courses such as from Coursera, deeplearning.ai to understand the core concepts of LLMs, transformers and prompt engineering. Nowadays, since this Gen AI is booming, new websites which offer free certifications for generative AI. So after learning this cloud and after learning Python, Pandas, NumPy using these libraries, we can easily go on with generative AI course. That's why it's planned in the action tree. So for each action, we can plan around seven days for each action. So if you complete these three actions in many days, we can spend for revising that or working more, doing some real-time projects on that. So according to my experience, if you do even tens of courses also, it won't give you much value unless or until you do some real-time projects, this is what I have experienced myself. Sir, can you scroll? Okay, sir has already mentioned that in the second month, the second month is dedicated to hands-on applications to build a portfolio, which is a very, very, very important step. So here also we have three actions. So first action, define a capstone project such as RAG application that answers questions from custom documentation. So this RAG is very much valued in the industry. Recently, one of my friend got placed just by doing basic RAG project and he got placed into the to some government agency which is giving him lax of salary and giving him all access to all the AI, upcoming AI tools with subscriptions. He is learning new tools and even upgrading himself and getting salary and working on a project. So this RAG is very important because I have heard from my friends of who are studying in AI ML, artificial intelligence and machine learning branch, they told me about this right? And again, in the action two, the plan is telling us to do a project based on LLMs and they also mentioned frameworks like Langchain and deploy it on your chosen cloud provider. So I had the experience of deploying one of my project, which was not an easy. It took around three, four days for me to deploy it. So even, see, we have learned some technology or whatever it may be. So deploying it on the website or deploying it on the Chrome gives you a different experience and the way you learn lot of things and you will explore lot many tools which we need to know and if you have all this experience, I think that will definitely help us in interviews. So coming to action three, document the entire process meticulously on GitHub, including the code. A detailed readme and blog post explaining your architecture and learnings. So one of my seniors suggested me to visit the GitHub at least twice a twice in a week and whatever the project we are doing, we should try to commit it every day. So that in our, in our account, the GitHub will show how many days we were active and how, how much actions we have done. That will also help us a lot. And in the resume, if you provide the GitHub link, so recruiters will visit the GitHub link and see what are the projects that we are performed. And that readme itself explains how, how simple you are explaining so that every recruiter who visits our GitHub application will easily understand our project. These things recently I'm experiencing, I think I could, I I keep feeling that I could have done these things before only. And a blog was explaining your architecture and this we can do on LinkedIn or any other social media platforms.
Okay, Devamma, do you have anything? Devamma, do you have anything to say, contribute or ask a question from Niranjan?
No, sir, no.
Okay, then we will proceed to the next month, shall we?
Yes.
Okay, one to three.
I think this is the last month, sir.
Yeah.
We are done with two months, I think we came to last month. So the final month focuses on validating your skills and engaging with the market. So here also we have three actions, study for and pass a relevant specialty certification such as AWS certified ML specialty or the Google Professional Machine Learning Engineer certification. See, what happens is we have already done with our basics, we have the standard foundation. And these certification which are mentioned here does not cover any fundamental concepts and they also charge lot of money, no problem in that. So if I keep telling my friends, if you have money, take some course and spend the money on that. Because these certifications are very standard ones. Even when I was doing my internship, product manager of our company come and told me to do this Google data analytics course, which was very important. He also told that if you want to go in product domain, it is very helpful. He is having some five to six years of experience and now he is doing that certification. See, working in a product, he know everything, even Power BI, Excel and all is very perfect. But still he is doing that certificate on a weekly basis. So that itself explains how important for us to do the standard certifications and how important for us to have the certifications on our resume. Update your LinkedIn and resume reflect a skill bundle approach, highlight your Gen AI project and new certification. Of course, this is very important phase. This is like, I, I don't suggest you to do this in a month three only because you have to keep doing that from month one only. Because on the way only you may get some new job opportunities or new internships that are waiting for you. And this is, if you observe, in two months, you have covered not many skills. I think there are not many freshen openings who have learned only just those things, not any other things. If you learn, what has to be learnt in just two months, that itself will, I think, give you the project. And month three, month three is very standard, if you complete month three, I think you can easily go to job market or ask for job to any HRs so that your resume is also very good and you will easily get job. And highlighting your certification and projects. So see, highlighting the project means you need to put them on the GitHub as I already told. And one more thing is now LinkedIn is providing one option where you can add whatever the projects you have done. You can add the documents related to that and you can even host it or paste that link in your profile so that recruiters can easily see that website, what you have done or what project you have done. And highlighting that those things, see, these days I'm seeing many people, they are not ready with their resumes. For example, suddenly if some jobs, job comes, so what happened is in my hospital only, there is a guy who had interview today. So he prepared resume yesterday. And today only he had the interview, so that was how the things went for him. I would suggest anyone to get standard resume. Even if you ask in the night at any time, if you want your resume, you should be able to send that. I think that is very important part, which everyone has to do. And action three, begin networking actively on LinkedIn, connect with recruiters at target companies and start applying to 15 relevant job postings per week. See, if you are visiting LinkedIn every day, automatically you will see some valuable posts from people who are working in Google, Microsoft, they will be posting some things on the LinkedIn. And you will get to know to whom I have to connect and all. And there are some strategies where you can connect with HRs. So one of them I would like to share here. So if you go to search button in the LinkedIn and type the word HR and the technology on which you are working, the, that algorithm will automatically, automatically show which are the companies that are working on that technology and who are those HRs. So without thinking any extra thing, you can you connect to all those 10 members. And when you give connect, it will show you add or note. So there you can directly ask those recruiters, ma'am, I'm doing so and so, I want to do internships at your company, is there any opening? So that itself, some recruiters, if they have have any opening, see, some, all jobs are not posted on LinkedIn, somewhere they will take referrals on it. If they are planning to take, I think that will help you. I'm doing, I'm doing this daily these days because now I'm searching for jobs. So that's why I'm sharing you this experience. See, if you complete, so all the three actions are completed, so we had total nine actions here. So if you really plan well and complete these nine actions, among them doable are only six to seven actions. Remaining things are like maintaining LinkedIn, so showing your certifications in a proper way or visiting the GitHub, these are our extra things. So if you provide time for these six actions, I think that will give a lot of value to your resume and the jobs which you can apply for, if you are having high number of skills, you have the broader aspect where you can apply for any kind of jobs. For example, in the LinkedIn only, when you are applying for jobs, they will ask for some seven to eight skills. So they won't expect all skills from you, even if you have five or six of them, you can apply. Even if you have three or two, also you can apply. So I think that's why this 90 days is very important, where you can learn multiple skills that are mainly these are now booming and they're, they're in the industry now. I think that is a thing. Thank you.
Niranjan, I have a question for you.
Completed my things.
Yeah, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can the students do all these nine actions while they are studying?
Sir, you were not ready.
Okay, is it possible to find time for the students who are in college? And they are also going to classes? Can they also simultaneously take up all these actions? Am I, am I clear?
Yes, sir, they can take up if they have that, yes, sir, yes, sir, you are clear.
Okay.
Sir, especially if, if they are not doing any internships or courses. So they can easily do this. They can schedule some hours only for completing this 90 days' action plan. For example, in the morning only, if they provide some five to seven or in the evening, eight to 10, if they provide some two to three hours exclusively for, exclusively for learning Python, Gen AI, this 90 days' action plan, I think they can absolutely do this. But they need to have lot of commitment, without that it won't come. I think they will spend lot of time on solving errors. Some days they may feel blank, some days they may feel, why am I even learning this? Even they are not sure they are going to get job on that thing or not. So I think these struggles will be there on the way. They should agree to all these struggles and give time and work on that, then only they can do.
Okay, here coming to the month two, there's something written here. RAG. Now is it the, the capstone project, what is capstone project?
I have used that word, sir, I'm not getting that.
No, in the month two, they have to do some project, correct?
Yes, sir.
So what are these projects?
Build a project, sir, they can take, like in YouTube only, if they search, there are already some projects which are done by some YouTubers for learning purpose. For in the beginning level, they can do as they are telling so that they will also get some real-time experience and they don't need to do much, they have to just follow the video. If they done any two or three mini projects like that, then they can take up their own projects and work on it.
Okay. Here, there another question that comes to my mind. How about data analytics? Are they supposed to do some data analytics courses or something?
Sir, I'm not very much known about data analytics. The thing is, data analytics is mainly about learning these tools, Power BI and all. That they can do once they go into job. Now let them learn some core skills which we are mentioning like Gen AI, Python, cloud computing and all. If they learn these things, they have that basement. Later they can learn these tools and to data analytics.
Okay, now coming, second question. This certified Kubernetes administrator, what is this?
The Kubernetes is used by Google. They had some invention where the things which we search will be, will, will get the faster replies and all. So now they are using that, whatever the application, if you want to deploy into the Google Chrome and all. So we need to use that Kubernetes and the certification is about that.
So do you think it is better for them to do something?
Sir, Dharani wants to tell something.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Niranjan, for the interruptions, like right now I'm doing.
She raised her hand, let her turn.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir. Actually, like as you said, Niranjan, like Devops certified Kubernetes administrator, right? So in order to do that, we just want to have a good knowledge on the automation, like what is it? This one, right? Containerization and also we have to be familiarized with the microservices, right? Without doing that, entering into the Kubernetes, it will help us. Like before that, we have to concentrate on the some of the like basic standards, right? Without that building basic standards, we cannot enter into the Kubernetes. I think you get my point.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand.
Okay, then, thank you. What about between the AWS by this cloud by AWS or cloud by Microsoft?
Sir, both has, even I ask this question, both has its own importance. People who are learning some Microsoft framework like .NET, I think they need to learn this Azure and all those things. Sir, AWS, I'm not very much aware, but I just know some few things about. I think most people prefer AWS more than.
Okay, so Devamma, what is your view?
My question is, sir, I have a doubt to, like from where should I start? Like, I have to study so many courses. I'm so, I'm in so confusion, sir.
So, Niranjan, can you help her?
This question will be, and it's a very common question to all B students. So I already told her many times that whatever the final year project which she has taken, I think she has taken some AI and ML project.
Yes, yes.
And whatever we are discussing here is all about it. So I think if she follows this Python, NumPy, Pandas frameworks, if she learn this Python and its frameworks, I think that will help her. For her final year project also, it will help and even she will be able to this complete this 90 days' action plan.
But that AWS certified solutions, then Microsoft certified, I, I don't know about those.
Yeah, yeah, so before doing AWS and all, you need to learn some basics of cloud computing. I think they mentioned that in the week, I think week two or week three, they mentioned that in the first month only, they mentioned that. So if you after learn Python already, you know.
Yes.
And if you learn about this NumPy and Pandas and all, I think it takes hardly one week to base on that. And cloud computing, for learning the basics, it will take around one month for that. It will take around one month to learn. If you really dedicated, it will take one month for you to learn AWS. AWS or Azure both. See, you can't buy those 120K dollars by paying that much, you can't buy the certificate, I think that is very high cost for us. You, you can simply go to Udemy and search for AWS course on Udemy. I think there you will get for 400 or 500, you will get some course which you can affordable and we can do it.
But some courses are taught by AI, not human. We can't understand them directly or properly.
Can I repeat, I'm not able to hear.
Some courses are taught by AIs, brother.
He means that there is no human teaching, AI bot is a robot is teaching.
Oh, okay. Sir, I'm hearing this for first time, I'm not very much sure about that. I, I haven't seen any course like that.
Oh, I think she needs to pick up.
We need to see the reviews and all and then only we can take the course.
Okay, Devamma, have you been able to understand or is your query resolved?
Yes, it is.
Okay, now come, so one more question. Did you do any research of yourself on, on your own to draw your own 90-day plan?
No, sir, I haven't done anything like that yet.
Okay, now I'll come to Dharani. Dharani, I want you to tell me if you have done some research of your own using parallel.ai or any other to determine your own course of action.
Sir, actually I am into Java, right? So and at the same time, I'm learning this generative AI. So I have done a resource through parallel AI. So it gave me, like I have given my own schedule. So it has given me 90 days of schedule week-wise. So one thing, every day the lead code practice that I am doing. And the next thing, like what is it? This generative AI topics like first Python and then libraries and then what is it? Machine learning and everything, it has been given scheduled week by week. And after doing this like first step, it is, it is giving the Python, NumPy like the related libraries and a small mini project on that. And again somewhat knowledge added to that and then again small project and again somewhat knowledge added to it and again small project. And every day this lead code practice and this is doing, this is done. And I'm into this Java developer internship, right? So I'm not thoroughly learning these things like Kafka, Elasticsearch, PostRe, MongoDB. So I want to go deeper into that, even future, like these five technologies, this data. So I want to go deeper into that. If in future, like these five technologies, these databases, I can able to integrate with this Python also. Even machine learning. So parallelly, I'm doing lead code, generative A I and these databases. For this ninety days. Yes, sir, that's was my schedule. I have been done a research in parallel A I.
Uh very good. So do you think this will fetch you a career somewhere? Where will you get this opportunity in which sector?
Yeah, sir, as we talked previously, you know, it will get an opportu- can I like I will, I think I will get an opportunity at GoBanking. And also in many companies like in as we seen P W C, I did the research that. Java is used for testing purpose. They are using a tool called Selenium. So I think in the next month, they are coming for to hire the people in our college. So I got selected into that. Uh out of forty, they are select, they are doing a hiring process for so in order to uh. Like what is it? In order to crack that interview, I'm preparing the Selenium to just the basic level. I did the research uh about it. So it is saying that Java related people have to be good at Selenium tool. So I'm doing the research on that. And also some companies uh are also offering this uh. Back end development through Java. So I can able to, I think I will be fitting at that position.
Okay, do you recommend other students also to take up Java?
Sir, I think I personally interested into data scientists with A I. So I started learning the past uh like three months of time, I started learning Python and the libraries and machine learning. After that, my college is getting an opportunities for the Java developer and I shifted doing things in Java. So and I got an opportunity at Smash, it's a product based company. So I forcefully took that position and then I'm working on Java. And I'm right now, I'm in the position where I can write the code in Java and able to deploy the products through Docker into the Kubernetes. So I just want to, don't disturb this like this path. If in future, if I got an op- like if I got some time, I will just convert my field to a generator and data scientist. I'm interested into data science.
No, my question remains unanswered. Do you recommend that other students should also take up courses in Java?
Yes, sir. I think uh like Java is evergreen because we are seeing lot of like lot of codes. Whenever I'm asking the seniors uh in the same domain, they are saying that Java is coming with a new updates every six months. So it will be an evergreen thing. And every bank companies or else the companies who are required, the companies who. Like the third party companies who are storing the data, securing the data of the important financial companies. They want this Java to maintain more secure. So I think I will recommend the people to join in like to learn this Java.
Uh thank you. Now, Devamah, you wanted to say something?
Uh yes, sir, but my teachers and seniors said that we should be good at one programming language, that is enough. Uh like we can't do um two languages, like we can't be master the. Two programming languages like Java and Python at a time.
Okay, so uh uh it it is either you or it's either Java or Python.
Yes, sir.
You you choose your uh own way of progressing. Uh okay, now uh any more student is likely to join?
Uh I don't think so.
I was hoping that some more will be there. Anyway, so uh now that we have more or less covered the basics, I can just sum up. Uh yeah, uh. These are the references. Which this tool has used. And you can examine each of the references, you already had the link. What is the basis? Even the basis is available. You have to click here and you will get to know the basis. There are links to show, here is the basis, for example. Now, okay, the the last question of course is cybersecurity. I'm not sure if anyone amongst you is working on cybersecurity. There is one student, Shekhar. Reddy, M C A, he is working on cybersecurity. He promised to come up with a session next week. So if anyone amongst you is interested in cybersecurity, we will hold a session next month. And Dharni, will you please share your report, your A I report? And put it in the group, the link. They have. So let. Uh everybody have a look at it and then uh okay, Devamah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, tell me.
Uh no, sir, I have no doubts.
Okay, are you comfortable now? Are you comfortable with the session or you have any questions from anyone?
Uh no, sir. Uh if I have, I will ask them directly.
But I have a question for you. You had done a course in uh business analytics with A I.
Yes, sir.
Now, how is that course? Do do you find it good?
Yes, sir.
And did you do the project work?
Yes, sir, I have done mini project.
Uh mini project in the A I uh business analytics.
In a business analytics with A I.
Very good. Can you please post your project report in the group?
Yes, I will.
Uh and do you think where you will get a job with this business analytics?
Uh yes, sir, but uh they should come to our college for hiring the specified business analytics course. Like so, it uh uh yesterday, uh I B M has come to our college. But for the system associate engineer, I don't know anything about it. Now I'm struggling to prepare for for it.
Uh the question is that as I explained to you, business analytics is a very wide. Widely used subject in F M C G sectors or even all uh. Uh you know corporates because they are into business and they generate huge amount of data. And that data, if it is done with legacy software, it takes time. That is where when you do business analytics or you do software development, the consulting companies. They want you to provide, you know, the client requires the consulting organization. To provide them with an end to end solution.
Sir, I'd like to answer Devamah's question.
Sorry?
So I'd like to answer Devamah's question.
Yeah.
She's asking tomorrow, she's having the I B M interview. Uh the role is uh having, using some other technologies.
Yeah.
Am I audible, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh see, I would like to give one suggestion. In the interviews, uh they don't ask uh only the technology which they use. They will mainly focus on your resume, whatever the things that are present on your resume, that only they will ask. And they will, they may ask you to write a code. In the language which you know, they won't specify any language for you, uh like you should write in this language on it. First, so my suggestion is, whatever the resume you have, whatever certifications you put over there. Uh whatever the skills that you are uh put over there, uh learn them only properly. Don't uh worry much about anything other. And I think today she has completed her resume also. So now things will go good for her if he is, if she is good with the things which are present on resume.
Uh yes, uh I am actually I'm preparing and I'm re- revising those all uh weekly. But they ha- they have come for a specified role. How can they look at my resume and they will ask questions?
See, you don't have to worry about uh role. You just. See, they will ask questions from your resume. For me, in any data, they did not uh ask any Java specific questions. Because they use more Java.
Okay.
Uh they'll ask all inter- inter-model only. For example, okay, I'll give you my live example. I have a friend who got placed in a very good company uh called Boomiya. Uh there they are using only Java, no other language. So when the interviewer was questioning, he answered the questions in C plus plus. And interviewer hired him, though Java wasn't basic for him. So that's why I'm telling, whatever the thing that is present on your resume, that only you cleanly explain. Nothing else is required, don't worry.
Okay, now I got some confidence.
Yeah, and what I what I would suggest, the campus interviews. Uh I do not know how popular is our college, how many companies land up there. But whatever it might be, campus interviews of course will give you good good choices. But besides campus, there must be other ways of approaching companies. So many recruiters are there. Uh they, you have to feed your resume to all those recruiters. Even approach companies directly. I think I do not know if it should work. Anyway, uh I think you have to keep researching, whatever skills you have required, these are your skills. And which companies are likely to hire you, you put across a question.
Okay, sir.
That's all right. Okay, so.
I think I just want to add up for Devamah, like I I think it will be helpful for you for tomorrow project, like for tomorrow interview. That whenever like they are asking about your project, it's better like explaining your part of work in that. Don't say that like entire project is done by me, that suggestion that I got from the interviewer. So sir, if it is helpful, then uh once uh say it to Devamah, like is it the good way to say or no? Hello, am I audible?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yes, sir. Actually, when I was giving an interview at Smash company, they said like uh. This the entire project is done by you. I said like only the some part of project I did by me. And then I explained it very clearly what the part I have been contributed to that particular project. And I portrayed it as a teamwork and collaboration I have. And the other guy who like the same uh. The pi- the classmate who is there in my class, uh he explained that the entire project is done by me. And he not properly explained the entire thing. So it's better to take your part of thing. And then explaining it very clearly, the flow and everything, and what technologies that you have used and why why you have used that. It is better thing, I think, uh like Devamah.
Yes, sir, I got now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we had, we had the time. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We had the time till seven fifty. It's seven forty seven, there are only three minutes remaining. So in these three minutes. Is there anything else that you would like to say? Any other thing?
No, sir.
Okay, I think.
Session will end in another two minutes. Uh we have another session at eight o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, we can stop here.
Yeah, so just wanted to inform.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Nirajin. Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.